Turn off our camera and then you put the clerk PC back on.
Right.
And then turn off the camera first. Yeah, otherwise you'll see the instruction.
Right.
And then to get back to normal, turn. Yeah, turn the string deck to any other camera.
Right.
And then turn our camera back on.
Have a lot of folks join virtually today. It's kinda chilly out.
Yeah.
Uh, I've heard of two coming virtually. Have you heard of any more?
I have not. See this there? Just seeing this.
I was sure tempted.
Yeah. It's kinda quiet for this time so far.
Flu has been falling this house.
Been going around.
Is this our presentation tonight?
Yep.
Yep.
Just up close and personal.
Okay.
Should be pretty short.
Ted, their TIF one oh one.
There'll be a little slide as to TIF one oh one.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Not really, but there are days when I do. Like when it's really cold and you really have to wrap up.
Last year there were all these people complaining like, oh, why didn't we get winter? And I was just like, what's wrong with you? And this year I'm like, well, here you go. You better love it.
Better be out there enjoying it right now.
Yeah, I hope you're really life.
Fifty below.
It is more snow. Less cold, more snow.
Yeah. Everybody has their own idea.
That's right. He's still, he's still in the hospital yet. It's a long haul. Yeah, so. But yeah.
If you don't, if you don't ask me.
No, no, that's fine. Um, yeah, the, um, I don't remember. Um, there was one week when John didn't think he was gonna make it. I think that was about the time Jeff, he was asking him about it or something. And thank you for offering that. Yeah.
It's gonna change his.
Yeah. But, um, he went to see him a couple of days ago and, um, they were just, I mean, so weak now, you know? And so they were just starting therapy to make him do things, you know? So, yeah.
It's a long road like a certain.
Yeah. And then of course he, you know, depression sets in.
Sure. Oh, yeah. It's hard all around, you know, so.
And then, yeah, and then there was a, I don't know, a period of a week and a half where John didn't go see him because we were fighting a virus and something to happen like that. And I was so cold.
Right, yeah. So that was pretty, pretty busy day, you know? I felt a little compromised over the past couple of weekends. So. It was a trip that literally shut down.
Yeah.
Taking my vitamins and making sure I'm asleep. Are those a Spartan on your hands or?
No. No. Um, no, it's Livwell.
Okay.
It's that.
I feel like I should know this.
They are working on.
Good. How are you?
Mental health things.
Is that part of the college?
Um, most of the founders are. I only know, well, I only know what he's. But.
In a hundred ways, starting to get his feet up.
Well, they do all kinds of stuff.
The Husky, he can just lay down and recover his cause.
None of that is sound. Some are really terrible. Oh, I found, um, I found what feels like. It's not like a secret world, but for as much time as I've spent on this, I have never gotten to this. Um, I find really interesting because it gives some of those like more explicit door exchange values. But I'm not a hundred percent sure how to, there's many sheets, like many sheets. Kinda learned how to read it, but. And you're doing kids. Chipping on the one.
I may not probably ask.
Can I tell you, I almost grew up in a gasket house. When I started seeing people open up for dandelions.
Yes.
If this has been in there before.
Because I was like, did we not just go through this with the public thing?
Yes.
And we were like, well, it's your way now. Or, well, it's a school, this or whatever, it was dating. And I'm like, we are these sole account receivable. And somebody had the warehouse, put it in the, um, in the newsletter. The drop of news and, and I was like, and nobody had, nobody called me up. Nobody thought to throw a Facebook post, nobody thought. Like, well, we put the newsletter in with the bill. I was like, I know you don't think that's a heads up.
No, anyways.
And I asked Ladina about it and he goes, oh, I didn't read it. Exactly. He's a regular person.
Yeah, I know. You know, it's just more trash.
I'll get to the bill and people start posting. I don't know what's on it. They said. And it was something, I don't know why the long months mattered because. We're, we're like doing October, November, December now. But if you build a letter, I was a long. I guess that's one of the big. So then I was, well, it's only different since twenty dollars. Ladina's eighty.
I don't know. Mine's higher. I know.
You know. I'm like, once again, like, how do we?
Yeah.
I can't control the district. I can't control the authority of power. But we absolutely have full knowledge.
I saw they existed. I had a chance to read them.
Like, I, I, I'm the chair. I had no idea.
Well, I think it's double, uh, higher.
Um. And it was like, well, that's what they use. I'm like. Me and my friends, they're sorry to pay for people else. It's not a well. It's like, you can get better. It's supposed to be better now. Their first installment is due. Next week, the thirtieth, and now it's.
For over all of us.
I thought a little.
Yeah. Uh, I'm like. I mean, I added that.
I mean, it's relative.
And I keep doing it for. Everybody else.
Well, I just got on the summer.
Can those on teams hear me?
I can.
Yep, so can I.
Thank you.
Yep, I can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you.
You know, from the house, we were already adjusted, so they have an extra. So, so then our supercut, right?
But still.
Yeah, because it was like August, September, October.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Sorry, dude.
Not too bad, Mike. How was it?
Sounds like you're gonna get it.
Well.
I like that. Charging in the past and now they're charging in the future or something. They, they changed.
You mean, do you miss?
Somehow they're, you're, we're paying them.
Yeah. So I wonder, I wonder if like.
First guys in town. Fucking sharp.
Thought you talked about my sweater.
Oh, I have.
You're gonna get a sweater on.
You're gonna like sweater on.
I got one too on my shoulder.
I, I did have a, I had a quick retort, but I.
We're taking information from them.
It's good.
I'm not very good at holding back.
Here we go.
You're a better man than I am.
I will tell you what I was gonna say.
Okay.
If it would've happened in that corner. So I don't want to write anything. I was gonna say, it must be very warm.
It's warm.
Three months, it is very warm. It's a compliment, isn't it?
It is, yes.
Okay. We need more.
We do. Wish my house could have a sweater. I just start looking.
That's exactly.
So it's like.
Twenty-one year old.
Because it's like.
It's on my list of changes. July. Think that you do it this year, change on the second of July. My wife is always. So again, another year. You know, I, I don't, I would take maybe we could.
Sure.
To be honest, I'm not gonna.
I don't wanna have it. It's okay.
So it's not just.
Was that more for that? Well, now. This is what I actually.
Twenty-one below or whatever it was this morning.
Yeah. Do you have, uh, some people or is it? Twenty years. Ours is.
Yes, we're reading it correct.
We get a boiler. So we, we do have.
But, um.
Our big son's gonna be. Yeah. But, uh, we're thinking the same thing.
Right, exactly. Give me two more next three months.
Because I was just like. At first I was ready for a long time without the, um.
Good evening, councilors. It is six thirty PM, so I will call the Tuesday, January twenty-first meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Ladine.
Here.
Counselor Van Sickle. Counselor Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney. Counselor Fantasy. Counselor Elm. Vice President Ludwig. Counselor Herrick. Counselor Johnson.
Here.
President Grasky.
Here.
We have a call.
Item three point one is a public hearing on the approval of a resolution approving the amendment to vacate and discontinue the east-west alley of budding lots thirteen through seventeen and the easterly seventeen feet of lot eighteen, block four seventy-eight, West Superior, nineteenth division.
Okay, if there's no objection, I will open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak to this resolution? Would anybody like to speak to the resolution? Would anybody like to speak to the resolution vacating, uh, these alleys? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
And approve the resolution.
The motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, seconded by Counselor Elm to close the public hearing and approve the resolution. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item four point one is the approval of the January seventh, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting minutes.
Motion's by Counselor Herrick, seconded by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item six point one is report from Mayor Payne.
Okay, good evening again, councilors. Uh, just a couple of local and not so local things coming up. Uh, probably the most significant thing I worked on today and will work on for the next several months is, uh, our zoning code. I got a brief update from our consultants. The, the Plan Commission has put a lot of work into that already, but it's gonna kick into high gear and we're gonna start, you know, writing a new zoning code now here in twenty twenty-five. So most likely that's gonna result in some special meetings of the Plan Commission to do only that. I'm gonna remind you about it every single time because this is, uh, very important. It is, uh, one of our most impactful ordinances on the books, uh, has a great deal to do with housing and commercial development. So, uh, if, generally the things we all care about in local government is covered by the zoning code. So I'm gonna strongly encourage you to attend as many of those meetings as possible, especially when we're really getting to the guts of it and start writing because, you know, this is not, this is just not formulaic work here. We're, we're actually making some real decisions about the future of our community. So, uh, I'll let you know when those dates are. We will probably at the next Plan Commission meeting in February start setting the special meetings. Uh, the governor's budget address is February eighteenth at seven PM. Uh, I only call that out because that's a, a very, it's gonna be a very consequential document this year, uh, and I would hope it would have some consequences for Superior. Uh, the biggest piece of news I have is we are going to start replacing lead lines this year. So we don't have the clearest of clear plans for how to replace every single lead line, but I think you would all agree that we can't wait to start replacing them. So any construction, road construction project we do, we are going to offer to replace the, the private side, the homeowner-owned side, lead lines along those streets. So for twenty twenty-five, that's East Fifth Street, uh, Hammond Avenue, the, uh, southern section, part two. Uh, and then going forward, we'll probably just do that for every major street project. We will rely on the help of the councilors in those districts whenever we do a road project going forward to help us connect with those residents so they understand what we're doing. Obviously, that's still their line. We're just going to pay for it, uh, and do it as part of the project, but they've got to agree to that. So we'll, uh, I'll, I'll stay more in touch as we get into the project plans for those specific projects. Uh, obviously, we're doing this for the first time, so we're gonna learn quite a bit on these projects. And finally, uh, at the last meeting, I talked, uh, about travel and your schedules. Uh, I'm setting my schedule for the whole year. Typically, I would not go to Washington every year. I'd, I'd go about every other year. Uh, but with the new administration, I'm probably gonna go this year, likely in May. I always try to pair it up with a conference that I would find useful. Uh, this year, NACTO, uh, the National Association of City Transportation Officials. It's an extremely valuable body that helps us design, uh, our city. In fact, the conference is called Designing Cities. That's in Washington in May. If anybody's interested in learning a lot more about how cities are designing themselves for transportation, coming to Washington, uh, uh, taking a couple of official meetings, uh, we'll miss the cherry blossoms this time, but it will be, that, that'd be a pretty valuable trip and I would be happy to take you. We're gonna, we, we, we're members of NACTO anyways, so it, it's actually more to the city's benefit to have more people participating in that. That's my report. Let's start our questions. Uh, Mr. Herrick.
Yeah, just going back to lead line replacement. Are you talking about just replacing the lines where you're doing the major, uh, you know, road repairs, like you mentioned Hammond Avenue?
Yes.
And, and so is water and light replacing the main lines like down Hammond Avenue? And then we're just looking at going to the homes that have lead lines? Is that what you were talking about?
I, I think the answer to your question is yes. I, I can't speak to what, uh, the utility will or won't do, but yes, that, the line that's on the person's property that they own.
Sure.
That's what we're talking about replacing. Um, my understanding though is the federal line, it, you know, you have the line along the street, like you mentioned, then it, uh, uh, bisects that, uh, perpendicular and goes to the house. Generally speaking, I think about half of that is usually privately owned, half of it is owned by the utility. Federal law, I believe, requires the utility to replace their half when the private side is replaced. So, uh, I'm, this, I'm announcing this because we're starting that planning right now, so we'll have more conversations on this. I, I won't be able to answer every question, but generally, we're talking about those residential side and I assume the utility will also replace theirs when we have the street open.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Elm.
My question circles around, revolves around the funding of this. It sounds like this would be part of the federal funding that comes about. Are we applying for that as the city or how are we paying for this?
Uh, we're building it into the project cost. Uh, it's actually not that, uh, large an increase in the project cost. These are substantial projects, so it's little more than a change order on the size of the projects. Uh, it was actually a fairly creative solution came from Todd Janigo. In terms, there's a lot of lead line work. This is just starting out and it's so that we're doing something and while we have, we, we don't wanna miss any more opportunities while we have roads opened up and people with lead lines next to those projects. So we're, uh, uh, but that doesn't mean we can't access funding for more projects because at some point, we're gonna have to replace lines where there is no project, where, where we're not ripping up the street, where we actually only have to rip up their yards. Uh, we're gonna have to identify funding for that too and we're gonna work on, yeah, applying for as much state and federal funding as we can. Uh, but I'm pretty committed to doing it, so if we don't get that funding, there's gonna be a city cost. Right now, it's just built into the project, so that is a city cost, which also, uh, those projects have some, uh, state and federal funding though too.
So the program is yet to be fully designed. Um, but if, if we're replacing the part with Hammond Avenue and say if all those homes needed the replacement, uh, are we, have, sending a cap on that, I imagine? Or, I mean, we wanna do as much as possible, but like, how do we determine that? That's just to be determined later?
If you are, if you live along Hammond Avenue where it, where we are opening the street, we're gonna offer to, and you have a lead line, we're gonna offer to replace it. That's the cap. There's, there's no cap on that.
Okay.
You don't live on Hammond Avenue, we don't have a program designed for you yet. Uh, so, and not fully designed, this, we're just starting anything at all. So that, but we have an opportunity. We know where the lines are and we have, we have streets that are open, so we're going to do something. We'll keep working on how we're gonna finish the rest of it, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kinda dropped that on you, but time to start talking about it. Okay. Uh. Mr. Sweeney. Counselor Sweeney.
So two questions just came to mind. Are, assuming the spare water light replaces theirs down the main and then the half of it, I think you're right, property owner, and then the property owner's responsible for the other half. Is, and we're gonna put that in the water light. We're not contracting with spare water light. We're contracting with an independent contractor to do that or how is that gonna?
Right, I think a lot of time they, uh, that is true. We will contract with an independent plumber, the same way you would if you just decided to replace your line.
Okay. Uh, okay. It's a little premature for me to ask some questions, so that, that.
Uh, this is the first time I've gotten questions on a mayor's report in a very long time, so I'll, uh, let's put this subject on maybe the Public Works Committee and I'll attend and, uh, we'll try to ask a, answer a few more questions. I'll come a bit more prepared. I mostly wanted folks, you, to know that we're doing this, uh, while I had a microphone in front of me. Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, just one, just one more, uh, comment or, or question is, the thing I'm concerned about is, well, this was, well, quite a few years ago, I had, the city was, you know, basically down my street separating stormwater, wastewater at that time. I was told that the line that was in there, uh, in that particular road is, you know, copper. And it was, of course, I've got good copper connections to my home. But my question is, I got a letter from Spirit Water and Power just a couple of weeks ago stating that I have a lead line. Now, the only thing I'm concerned about, and I, I think I'll take this up with them too, is that, is the source of the lead line, I mean, coming from where the water comes out in Lake Superior, is it led from there coming to the city? If it is, I mean, we're all gonna be considered to have lead lines, no matter what we do. So that's just something I'm concerned about and I wanna bring that up with water and light. So I don't know if you heard anything different or anything about that particular subject?
Uh, I, I could probably answer some of that. I would need to know, see the letter that you got, but everybody's individual property is different. The, uh.
Sure.
The lead inventory is spread throughout the city. It's in a lot of different places. So, uh, I, I've also heard from some, some folks that have been confused by the letter and thought they had a lead line when they really didn't.
Right.
Uh, it just kinda sounds that way. Um, that said, again, all I'm saying right now is, on these projects, we are going to replace the lead lines that are close to those projects. As you can hear from these questions, we have a lot of work to do, uh, and I hope that the utility is going to be a partner in that work because we've got people with lead lines going into their houses and now that we know where they are, I don't think we can afford to wait to get them out.
Sure, and that's what brought my concern because if, you know, if I have all these copper lines and all of a sudden I get the letter, and my question, and I'm gonna contact them too, is the lead source coming from where we get our water from Lake Superior? And then, of course, if there's any type of supply coming from the main source, it's gonna be considered, you know, everybody's got lead pipes. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but, but, you know, you have to eliminate the, the lead from the source too before you have non-lead, uh, pipes.
That is true. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, I'm gonna move on to the business that's on the agenda.
Item seven point four is the business of the Licensing and Fees Committee with a meeting held on January thirteenth. Is there a report from the chair?
Yeah, thank you. Um, this one, i- it actually looks like we, uh, we had a much more robust meeting than what it was where there's four, um, ordinance updates. It, this is all stemming from the same, the, the same thing. So on all four of these areas, the, you know, the alcohol, hotels, motels, rooming houses, manufactured homes, and tattoo establishments, what, what would happen is they, they pay the clerk, um, a certain amount for the, um, you know, for the application and part of that, um, in, in our ordinance, we were to collect a fifteen dollar fee and then pass that fifteen dollar fee back onto the county for the health inspection, um, the fee. And basically what that fifteen dollars was for is for them to give us the documents and them to, you know, keep us updated. you know, keep us updated. And our city clerk realized that all that information is already on the website. So, us collecting $15 to pass it on to Douglas County for them just to keep us updated on the status of the, you know, the inspection was a pretty antiquated process. So, that's really all this is doing, is getting rid of that $15 fee that was basically a pass-through fee anyways. And that was, yeah, that was the only action that we're needing. Let's hear questions for the chair. We will, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinances.
The first recommendation is to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 14, Alcohol Beverages, Article 2, License Fee, License Classification and Fees, Section 1424, License Fees, to remove the cost of health inspection fee.
Motion by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Fennessy. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The second is to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 74, Licenses, Permits and Business Regulations, Article 2, Hotels, Motels and Rooming Houses, Section 7430, Application for License, Annual and Pro-Rata License Fees, to remove the cost of health inspection fee.
The motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Moffett. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 3 is to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 78, Manufactured Homes and Manufacture Home Parks, Section 7816, License Fees for Manufactured Home Parks, to remove the cost of health inspection fee.
Motion by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Moffett. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And item 4 is to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 74, Licenses, Permits and Business Regulations, Article 9, Tattoo Establishment, Section 74255, License Fees and License Year, Separate License Required for Each Place of Business, Display of License, to remove the cost of health inspection fee.
The motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Sweeney. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Yeah, so, counselors for item 8.1, point 1, the business of the Redevelopment Authority, that actually needs to be approved only after 10.4 is approved. So, if, I'll ask unanimous consent to place that on the table for right now, and we'll call it back at the end of the meeting. Is there objection to that? Okay, seeing no objection, item 8.1.1 is on the table. No, we'll do it at the end. We'll just keep going. Any other committees and commissions?
All right, so at this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made?
Hearing none. We can move to Counselor Elm.
Are we on 8.2 yet, or?
8.2, reports, hands, recommendations? Yes, yes.
Yeah, I had a question with the Police and Fire Commission. Looking at the minutes here, there was four, looks like four police officer resignations in a row. It seemed to stand out. I don't know if there's some reasoning behind that, or if the chiefs...
There is an explanation for that, and I'm gonna get it wrong. Like, I can tell you one or two of them. It's not as dramatic as it sounds, but the, there'll be a fuller explanation in the Human Resource Committee, unless the police chief is on and wants to explain it. Otherwise, I can get you an answer. We talk about it in Human Resources as well.
Sure.
Unless, Counselor Fennessy, do you know the answer?
Yeah, if I remember right, I believe two of those were officers that were in their probation period and either voluntarily left or weren't meeting the requirements. One of them was, went to one of her neighboring cities for, I think, a better, yeah, better offer, and I don't remember what the fourth one was. But Mayor Penney, you're right, it's not, it looks alarming. Yeah, I mean, the only alarming part about it really is the, you know, just that crunch that it puts on the, you know, the rest of the force, but it, they were all valid, I guess.
Sure, it was a perfect storm, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, really.
All right, yeah, thank you. It just, it stood out, so I wanted to know. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any further committee or commission reports or questions? Hearing none, we can move to new business.
10.1, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Moffett. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.2, I'm recommending approval of an unlimited transfer, full-service retail outlet for Earth Rider Brewery for the Lake Superior Ice Festival located at Barker's Island Superior on January 24th from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., and on January 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Motion is by Counselor Moffett, second by Counselor Fennessy. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.3, Planning Economic Development and Port Director CIRK recommends approval of a resolution authorizing staff to submit the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Initiative Grant, Application for the Redevelopment of 2704 North 21st Street.
Motion is by Counselor Moffett, second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Assume everybody read the resolution, ice cream in Billings Park. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
And item 10.4, Planning Economic Development and Port Director CIRK recommends approval of a resolution of the City of Superior, approving the project plan establishment, establishing district boundaries and making relevant findings to the creation of tax incremental district number 19.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Herrick. I'm gonna ask Mr. CIRK to introduce this briefly, and then to introduce Sean Lenz of Elders.
Mayor of Councilors, thank you for your time. Yeah, I'm gonna introduce Sean Lenz from Elders. Sean is, of course, our, one of our financial advisors, helps us out with TIF creation. Some counselors have seen this already. Actually, we held a public hearing at Plan Commission last month, or actually, this month, thus forwarding it on to you. We also had a presentation at Redevelopment Authority where Counselor Herrick was present. I think you probably, hopefully, you know a little bit about this project. Ryan is here. Ryan, earlier this fall, purchased the Lake Superior Elementary School, former Lake Superior Elementary School, and came to the mayor and I with a plan to put apartments in it, 50 apartments, 23 of which will be what we're terming kind of rent-controlled, and another 27 that will be market rate. To make this happen, there was definitely a good but-for argument in this. But for being able to provide some of this type of housing, we needed to create a tax-increment district to kind of move this forward. Sean's gonna talk a little bit about the numbers. We'll also probably talk a little bit about the development agreement at the end of the meeting as well, which has been tabled. So, Sean, I'm gonna have you take it away, and there will be a little TIF 101 in this as well. It's a good refresher for everybody. So, Sean, go for it.
Yeah, thank you, Jason, for the introduction, and just to double-check, Mayor and council, am I coming through clearly for everyone?
Sound great.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, as Jason mentioned, we've got a brief presentation, and if questions come up, Mayor, if you could just notify me, I'd be happy to take those as you so direct. Jason did a real good job of introducing the topic, and I wanted to just follow up on that with a brief discussion about tax incremental financing. It's a very popular tool in the state of Wisconsin for promoting development and redevelopment projects. The City of Superior has used it very effectively in the past, and as Jason alluded to, this site has a great opportunity to be redeveloped, but would need, per what's called the but-for analysis, but for the use of tax increment financing, it is unlikely, or potentially completely impossible for a project like this to move forward. So, what we're looking at in this particular case is, how can we use incentives and infrastructure improvements to see a site in the city get redeveloped? And tax increment financing is that tool which can allow a project like this to move As Jason alluded to, we like to talk a little bit about how the mechanics of tax increment financing work, and so with this district, the property was purchased from the school district prior to the end of last year, and so that value that the property was purchased at will be the base value for this tax increment district. And that base value, when it's taxed, will go to the taxing jurisdictions, just like any other property in the city would normally be taxed, in that the city would get a share of that tax revenue, the school district, the tech college, and the county. By creating a tax increment district, though, on this site, any increase in value, called increment value, and that's shown in purple on the chart on the screen right now, the increment value would be taxed at the exact same rate as any other property in the city, but instead of the revenue on the increment value going to all of the taxing jurisdictions, it will go to a special tax increment district number 19 fund, which then, by those dollars going to that fund, creates a funding source to pay for incentives or public infrastructure improvements, which allow a redevelopment project like this to move forward in the first place, and go from an old site that has, does not have a lot of taxable value, and does not have a lot of public purpose available to it at the current time, to a site that will help deal with housing challenges that Superior and many other communities are facing right now. In the long run, and this is shown in green on the chart, after the incentives and the infrastructure improvements have been paid back using that dedicated revenue stream of that tax increment district 19 fund, after those expenses have been paid back, then both the base value and the increment value will become part of the general fund tax base of all of the taxing jurisdictions, the city, the county, the tech college, and the school district. So, in the long run, the, all the jurisdictions are benefiting from this redevelopment, and will have that as part of their tax base for their general operations. So, taking that, our discussion about the tax increment financing tool and applying it directly to this site, what we're hoping by designating the area that you see on slide number four as tax increment district number 19 boundary in Superior, is we will then have the ability to provide funding for infrastructure and development incentives, which will then repurpose that existing building into a new apartment building that Jason described earlier. The project will result in new residential housing opportunities in the city. This district, there are a couple different categories of tax increment districts. This district fits best into what's called a blight elimination district, and the property had to be designated 50, at least 50%, meeting the blight definition under Wisconsin statutes, which it does. In this case, the entire site was able to meet that finding. The projects that we're putting into the tax increment project plan fall into two categories. Jason talked about the onsite incentives necessary to deal with some of the extraordinary costs of transitioning the school building into an apartment building, redeveloping it for that purpose. And then, there's also street and infrastructure improvements to make the site more accessible and usable, that are projects that will occur either within the boundaries of the TID, as well as within a half-mile radius, which is allowed under the tax increment district law in the state of Wisconsin. And finally, by putting these projects into the project plan, they are then able and eligible to be charged against that special tax increment district fund that I described earlier. But in terms of actually proceeding with the projects, each one will individually come before the city council for approval. Just by being in the plan alone does not mean that the city has approved the projects. They do need to go through the normal project approval process that the city does. Slide number five, we've done an estimate of the projected taxable increment value up and above the current value on the site, based on discussion with the development group, as well as the city's assessor. We're projecting Phase 1, which is scheduled to begin construction in 2025, with tax revenue in tax increment district 19 starting in 2027. We're projecting of a value, an increment value of a little bit more than 5.5 million. And there is property available for a potential second phase out in proposed tax increment district 19. That is a preliminary project, depending on the success of the first phase, but for the purposes of the project plan, we did include a potential second phase with a taxable revenue of approximately 7 million, if a very similar building were to be constructed at a later period in the life of the tax increment district. And on page, slide number five, you can see the impact of adding that 12.5 million in potential value to tax increment district number 19. Phase 1, increasing the value to a little bit more than 81,000 in tax increment revenue each year, and potentially with that second phase revenue going up over 185,000. And if the tax increment district were to remain open for its entire maximum life, which it doesn't necessarily happen all the time, but for projection purposes, if it did go for its full life, the total revenues are projected at just under 4.7 million in tax increment revenue in the district. Now, how would that revenue be used? Again, that's new revenue from taxes on the increase in value from the redevelopment of the old school building, as well as a potential second building that could occur during the life of the tax increment district. There would be two types of expenditures expected in this tax increment district. The first one, and this is part of the development agreement that I think you have on your agenda as well today, is a pay-as-you-go incentive for a little bit more than $1 million for the Phase 1 development. That would be handled as follows. As the development group completes the project, they will provide documents of their expenditures that are tax increment-eligible to the city, and if they meet that goal of the targeted over $1 million in expenditures based on the redevelopment on the site, and they pay their taxes starting in 2027, the city will use some of that new tax revenue received by the tax increment district to make a payment back to the developer of approximately $49,000 a year until the $1,018,000-odd incentive has been fully repaid. This is a type of incentive that, in a worst-case scenario, if the revenues or the dollars are not available, the city does not have to make these payments to the development group. It's predicated on the development being completed and the taxes being paid, and then the city turning around and using those dollars to pay the incentive, hence the term pay-as-you-go. The second category of expenses are the street utility, infrastructure improvements in and around and within a half-mile of the site. Those expenditures will be decided upon at different dates by the taxing, or by the city council, when those opportunities come forward, and they're shown in the project plan with a potential borrowing in 2030 and 2042, which would be repaid using the tax increment revenue. And finally, there is a second-phase development pay-as-you-go incentive, and again, that's very preliminary, but depending on negotiations with the development group around the potential second phase, we've included that in the project plan, should the city want to use this tool. the city want to use this tool for a future development in tax increment district 19. And again, by putting it into the project plan now, the city will have the option of moving forward with that, but we're not required to. And it will also allow the city to move forward with that project, should you choose, without having to amend the tax increment district at a later date. And you'll notice on the cumulative balances that all of these expenditures and costs are able to be repaid with the revenues projected in the tax increment district over its maximum 27-year life. Finally, before any questions of the council, the December 18th was the initial meeting date for tax increment district 19. We had a initial meeting with the other members of the taxing jurisdictions, the county, school district, and the tech college, as well as Jason representing the city. At that meeting, a fifth-at-large member or public member was chosen for the joint review board. They had a chance to ask, ask any questions of us, as well as the development group about the project. That same day, the plan commission held a public hearing on the tax increment district, and again, questions were able to be asked of the, of the plan commission. And an amendment was approved by the plan commission recommending the boundaries and project plan of tax increment district 19 to the city council. Today would be the, the next step in the process, which is review and potential action on a resolution by the city council. And if the council does decide to proceed with the creation of the boundaries and project plan of TID 19, we have a second meeting of the joint review board scheduled for tomorrow at noon, and they would also take a vote on the creation and the boundaries of TID 19 at that time. So Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to go through the materials and the presentation. At, at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the proposed tax increment district, as, as I'm sure Jason would be as well.
So councilors, the next order of business will be the, the project, or the development agreement to the, the project itself. So are there any questions right now over the creation of this test, district, or TIF districts in general? Counselor Sweeney?
I just have a question about the base value. That property was owned by the, by the school system, so the tax value was there, but we were not collecting any taxes up until we converted. Is that accurate?
Yeah, maybe I can start this, and Jason could plug in as well. Since the district, or excuse me, since the property was sold before January 1st of 2025, the, there will be a taxable value as of January 1, 2025, placed on that property because it was privately owned at that point. And that value, and I, Jason will, will be able to remind me what the estimate of that value was. I, I believe it was around...
It's about a million dollars.
Seven hundred, say that again, Jason?
I think it's a little less than a million dollars.
Yeah, I wanted to say three quarters of a million. Yeah, three, maybe three quarters of a million, or, but that value will end up being the base value because the, the base value of the district, in this case, will be January 1, 2025's value. And because that transaction occurred before the end of the year, that value would be placed on the property as the base value.
So yes, counselor, it is, it had no tax revenue whatsoever because the school district owned it before. Now, regardless of what you do here tonight, whether you create this TID, whether we do this project or not, Mr. Nelson must pay taxes on this nearly a million dollars in Other questions on TIDS or this proposal to, to create a TID here? If not... We had a motion, right? Yeah, we had a motion in a second. The, the question then is on the approval of the resolution to create tax increment district number 19. Any final questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Now, is there any objection to pulling item 8.1.1 from the table and considering it now? Hearing none, please.
Item 8.1.1 is the business of redevelopment authority with a meeting held on January 14th. Is there a report from the chair?
We don't have a report from the chair. We, the only business is the resolution.
That is, the resolution to approve the report of the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior, a development agreement and a cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, in connection with the Lake Superior Apartments LLC project.
Motion by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Herrick. Counselors, Mr. Nelson is here. Many of us have been discussing this several times over the last several weeks, but if you missed all those conversations, or you've come up with more questions or things you'd like to discuss, now is your opportunity for any of the folks we, we have here. So questions or discussion? Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, this one is directed to Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, of those 50 units that you will be building, 23 units are not market rates, so is there, are these non-market rate units going to be in a separate area? Are they going to be intertwined within the, the structure? Or how's that going to work for those 23 units?
Mr. Nelson?
At this time, the market rate units, or the units that are restricted on rent, aren't defined within the property yet.
You're, you're talking about the, the non-market rate units?
That's correct.
And then your question is?
Yes, how, I mean, is, are they going to be kind of separate from the difference that are market rate?
Physically, you're asking?
Yes, physically, yeah.
So we don't, yeah, we don't know that. We talked about that a little bit at the plan commission, so there's not a, a full design of that yet. But I think I, one of us asked something similar of plan commission, and it was like, there's not going to be like a wing only for those units. They'd be throughout the building.
They, they won't be isolated within the building of, of the other residents. They're, they're defined what's, what units they are and what size they are, so they'll be selected throughout the building, just as it fits best, I guess.
Okay, so they're not a, like a separate wing like the mayor mentioned, so?
No, they won't be treated any different.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other residents?
Thank you.
Any further, Counselor Sweeney?
Just a comment, your track record, City of Superior has been just great, so I'm, I'm glad you've taken on another project in the City of Superior. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your support. You've been with us since we started our projects here, and always appreciate the support.
The only point I want to make, a, a similar point that I made at the plan commission, you heard Jason refer to these as rent-controlled. We've, we've used a bunch of different phrases, basically anything but the word affordable, because that's something of a problematic term in housing. It's difficult to use that because everything is affordable to somebody, everything is unaffordable to somebody else. So the market rate units within this property will be affordable to many, many people, and unaffordable to many more. Even the, the ones that we're subsidizing here via the, this agreement, will still be out of reach for some people. It's designed to hit a very specific income category that, that we're not meeting well within the city right now. So if somebody's living in the lowest income status, in, in pretty significant poverty, you know, we, we will serve those people in other ways, namely through organizations like the Housing Authority. I just don't want, I don't want to advertise that these are just, anybody would be able to afford these. They are more affordable than the other units within the building, and they will target a certain income population, you will have to be income-eligible to move into them. But the agreement will control those, those guidelines. The prices won't be fixed, they will, they will shift with the local economy and demographics, but it, it, it's a chance to serve a population that's not been served very well. Counselor Sweeney?
So how is the, the owner of the property being subsidized for the difference between the, whatever we call it, the fixed rate versus the market rate?
It's a good question. So it's actually just the subsidy to the construction of the project. So all the things you saw sort of laid out in the TID agreement, where we're going to be granting back money to the, the project, he is agreeing to control these prices on certain apartments in exchange for those subsidies. So we're actually subsidizing the building, which I guess we are subsidizing apartments, we're not subsidizing the people that will move in. It's, we're subsidizing the building, and in doing so, the size of that subsidy is large enough that Mr. Nelson is agreeing to control those rents.
So I understand that you're saying, when you say building, we're subsidizing the building cost?
The whole project, yep.
Okay, thank you.
It is, it, we have not done a TID project like this, that I know of. This is, this is unique, this is the first time. Okay, other question, Counselor Herrick?
I just want to thank Mr. Nelson for his vision for bringing, you know, livable places to the community. So thank you for your years of your vision, so.
Yeah, thanks again, I appreciate your support.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, the question is on approval of the resolution adopting the development agreement and a cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority, between the redevelopment authority of City of Superior and Lake Superior Apartments LLC. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.5, Environmental Services Director Roberts recommends awarding the engineering contractor short Elliot Hendrickson Incorporated for phase one of the Blotnick Bridge sanitary sewer relocation project in the amount of $175,600.
Motion by Counselor Van Sickle, second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there a discussion? Counselor Herrick?
Just one quick question, the 175,600, is, is that our responsibility? Because didn't I read that 90% of it will be paid by the state? Is that correct? And that, is this mounted?
Oh, that's, that's a good question. Yes, I believe this is our, this is, this is our end.
All right.
Or, I'm sorry, no, this would, this would be just the design. The project, 90% is funded.
Okay.
Steve, are you trying to?
Yeah.
Jump in and actually answer the question?
Yeah, the 175,6 is the, the total amount of the contract with SEH at this point. And the city's share would be 10% of that, or about 18,000.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.6, Planning Economic Development Report Director CIRC recommends the approval of a resolution supporting the office and laboratory building expansion of the Lake Superior National Estuary Research Reserve.
Uh, the motions by Counselor Elms, second by Counselor Johnson. Okay, we've, Deanna Erickson is here. Did you want to give a brief update on where this project is at? We actually approved a similar resolution, councilors, a few years ago, and the project is now ready to go forward. It, it's a little different than the resolution we passed a few years ago, and I generally have an opinion that resolutions expire each year when, when we seat a new council. So I just thought, chance to bring her back in front of you and tell you about the project.
We're going to get slides up, just a moment. Awesome, thank you. And, can we get them up there, too? They're coming. Okay, sweet, thank you. All right. Hey, everybody, I'm Deanna, I'm the director at the Lake Superior National Estuary Research Reserve. And as the mayor said, this is maybe a familiar resolution, but I do want to provide just a brief update and take the opportunity to also share a little bit about what's going on at the reserve, and invite you to a few things that are coming up soon. So, in 2022, the city provided support for a grant proposal, which was funded, to design and construct an office expansion to the building down on Barker's Island, that's our office and research laboratory. The space need was pretty acute at that time, and it's, the, the issue has gotten worse. We did put that up for bid just about a year ago. We had around $360,000 to fund that construction, 1,820 square foot construction. The lowest bid that came in was $197,000 over that. So the university is not prone to coming up with $197,000 on short notice, and so the bids were canceled and back to the drawing board. So a year later, I'm putting in another proposal to fund the project expansion based on the median of the bids that we received last time. We did receive six bids, several of them were local, we really want, we're excited to see that. We just didn't have the funding that we needed. Important context I should share, too, and I think most of y'all are familiar with this, but the land that's under the reserves buildings is leased from the city, so it's important to demonstrate support from the city for the project. This is a funny photo of our staff all trying to fit in our little meeting room that's inside our existing offices. We have added, we went from five of full-time staff at the reserve now to 12. As of May this year, we're hiring somebody right now. And each summer, we add a lot of students and seasonal staff. So this summer, we have 11 student seasonal staff planned. You may have noticed our parking lot, if you drive down Barker's Island, our parking lot's a lot more full than it used to be. So we also have three Wisconsin Seegrant staff that share our building and also support one of our staff positions, which is a really excellent partnership. And for all those people, right now, we have seven offices. So I spend a lot of time rearranging furniture to try to get everybody to fit. So we worked with HGA, an architectural firm on contract to the University of Wisconsin System, to design the building expansion. It's really simple. It's eight offices, it's a conference room. It is not too far off of the existing lease that we have, but Jason did suggest that we will need to redo that, that lease once the construction is completed. So not too much more space, but enough for what we need, and enough kind of going into the, the long-term future. Fortunately, this also gave an opportunity to add solar energy to the roof. And the university UW system and UW Superior, who manages this facility for us, were both really supportive of that. It doesn't require too much modification to the building design, just a, a change in roofing material and, and a new electrical panel, so not a super big deal. It'll generate just under half of the energy that we need in that office, and it will pay itself off in three years. There's an incentive through the electrical payback that will provide just over $3,000 a year to the university to offset our electrical costs after that point. So the money comes from NOAA, it comes from federal appropriations, and it's a competitive grant, so there's no guarantee that I'll, I'll receive this money, or that the university will. The costs are considerably higher, it adds in solar, we have to do a little bit of redesign. So the proposal right now is about $910,000. It shifted a couple times through the day, so hopefully that number is still accurate enough. UW Madison Division of Extension, which is my employer, is putting in funding. UW Superior supports the project's construction through the bid process to completion. Wisconsin Seegrant also provided funding, as did the Friends of the Lake Superior Reserve, our nonprofit friends group. So that's what's going on with the building. It would be completed, I would say, late 2026, if funded. So we would have construction happening down there in a fairly visible location, but hopefully not during Dragon Boat and not during the ICE Festival. These are the, the things I wish to avoid. Transitioning away from the building, I just wanted to invite all of you to join us at the St. Louis River Summit this year. We tried this year intentionally to cluster some of our presentations that might be applicable for elected officials, county board members, city council members, like yourself. And so that is on Wednesday, March 5th, from 9:00 AM to noon. It's going to focus around the St. Louis River area of concern, where millions of dollars are being invested in restoration and remediation around our community. There's also a presentation on water rights and tribal sovereignty first thing in the morning on that day. So we would love it if you come. I'll also send a follow-up invitation because this is my kick this year, I really want to make sure that people know what's happening in the places that are around their community. Let's see, well, you can't see the top one, but Counselor Ludwig and Cam will be joining us for a presentation coming up next month called Rest- us for a presentation coming up next month called Restoring Good Fire to Superior Forest with the Fond du Lac Band. That's about the restoration, potential restoration of fire at Wisconsin Point in the pine plantations there. So looking forward to that discussion. It's very preliminary, but also promising in terms of restoration. And then the Friends of the Lake Superior Reserve Annual Member Meeting is coming up next month, and you're all invited to that. You don't need to be a member, and I ordered the tasty appetizers just the other day. So do join us. And finally, I just wanted to share a picture. We're discussing the water intake earlier, and one of the things that our research program does is track the emergence of harmful algae blooms and try to find ways that we can detect those in advance of their emergence. And this year, this is a student who is at UMD but from Superior, Dane Polkinghorn. Counsel Johnson recognizes him, I think, because he's not, he's just a recent grad. He built that buoy behind him with parts that we purchased and programmed it and made it talk to a computer. So we're actually doing real-time water quality monitoring off of Wisconsin Point in a, in an area that's proximal to the water intake, so that we might be able to better understand how the river is potentially seeding harmful algae blooms into the lake. So it was a really neat thing to see Dane launch that, and I just wanted to share that with you. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Are there questions? I actually disagreed with something. The discussions on good or traditional fire on Wisconsin Point are not preliminary. They're actually fairly well-advanced. And, so councilors, I would encourage you to attend that on February 12th. I won't go into it today, but when you find out that the fire chief and I are going to burn the forest on Wisconsin Point, I don't want you to be surprised. It's, it's going to be a very exciting thing. It's a, a very serious improvement to Wisconsin Point. That's going to be a really interesting, everybody has been impressed by those discussions and presentations when they've gone to, so please consider going to that. It's going to be even more important when we talk about the municipal forest. Other questions for Deanna about this, about this proposal? I'm sorry, Counsel Muffin?
I'd love to attend that event, but we'll be in Superior Days. So just a request that you would maybe consider recording that so we can watch it afterwards.
There will, there will be more presentations.
Yeah, but I hear you on that, and I, I think I can make that happen.
And we'll, we definitely will be talking about that in city committees too. Questions about the proposal, tough? If not, then all those in favor of approving the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you. If there is no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you, councilors.